All right, we'll go ahead and call the Tell City Common Council meeting February 1st, 2021 to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Give me just a second here and I will pull that up for everyone. All right, everybody see the flag? All right, go ahead and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We were a little out of sync on that, but we did the deed and we got it done. We did great. First item is the adoption of the agenda. I'll pull this up for us. Counsel, I do not have any additions or changes to the agenda. So if there are none, I intend a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion made to approve by Julie. Do I hear her second?
Second.
I think Larry beat you to that, Gary. So we have a second by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda.
Aye.
John, I think he was, John, that was an aye for approval, right? You're a little delayed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, this one to clarify that. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of the minutes for approval. We have two sets in here, one from our January 4th and one from our January 22nd. We'll start with the January 4th. Is there any changes or corrections to the minutes as presented? I will make an interesting note. Can you believe that Tony Holliday is a formal council member? No reports from any council members? Has that ever happened?
You'd be ashamed of yourself, but I'm asking for money, so I think it's okay.
If I don't hear any change in on the January 4th, we'll move on to the January 22nd special council meeting. And then we can vote to approve these both together if there are no changes. All right, I intend a motion to approve both the January 4th and the January 22nd minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do I hear his second?
I'll second.
Second by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that was an aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item on the, next item on the agenda is the comments of citizens. We do have two citizens that have joined us in our meeting. If either one of those citizens would like to speak up on any topic that's on the agenda or have anything else they'd like to bring before us, please do so now. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to committee and ward reports. First up, we'll start with councilman Ward 1, Larry Kleeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a brief report this evening. Did attend the Plan Commission meeting on January the 13th. Basically to reorganize for the year. And the Plan Commission will meet on the second Thursday at 6:00 PM. My understanding is that is if there is business to be transacted. So I, I have not received any notice. I don't know whether we're meeting on next Tuesday or not. I've not heard anything. And also I attended Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission meeting via Zoom. The Plan Commission, Tell City Plan Commission meeting was via Zoom. And the Indiana 15 meeting was conducted via Zoom on January the 26th. That was mainly a reorganization meeting for the year and they conducted some other business. The full board of Indiana 15 will meet January, April, August, and October. So that's their full board meeting schedule. And the last thing, and Mayor, you had commented on this, I believe at the, I'm not sure, one meeting recently, it may have been at the Board of Works meeting, last Board of Works meeting or the Water Board meeting somewhere. But I wanted to echo your thanks to the Street Department for cleaning that area up by AutoZone on Highway 66 and William Tell Boulevard at that intersection. It looks a lot better and I appreciate you taking the initiative. And our Street Department workers doing such a good job. That should be maintained by the state of Indiana, but it isn't and it's been an eyesight, eyesore for years and years. I appreciate the city taking the initiative and getting that cleaned up. So I just wanted to echo your thanks to the department for getting that done. That's all I've got.
You're welcome, Larry. Thank you. I'll pass that along to the Street Department. They'll be glad to hear that. To expand on that, they are going to be working in Sunset Park along the riverbank there. Doing some trimming and cleaning up down there as well. Driftwood, litter, et cetera, keeping all that cleaned up. So that will be further expanding soon. Next up, Ward 2, Councilman Julie Coner.
I also attended the Plan Commission with Larry via Zoom. Pool, there's not been a meeting for the pool committee, but I did contact Sean Reese and he said he was just made aware that the drain gutters are going to be put in this week that go around the edge of the pool. And that's all I know on the pool. I also had an LEPC meeting on the 25th via Zoom. And just elected officers and approved the new budget. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Next up, we have Ward 3, Councilman Phillip Simpson.
No report.
All right, next up, we have Ward 4, Councilman and Council President Gary Morton.
Got a couple of things here. One is the Perry County Recycling Management District had their meeting. A few things there went on. First of all, we reorganized and elected officers for the upcoming year. Chairperson Tom Hauser, I was chosen as the vice chairperson. District Director was Ken Smith, our Board Attorney Jeff Haggadorn, and our Controller Wes Terry. There was no advisory board meeting, but the members of the advisory board for this year are going to be again the same as last year. Dale Sprinkle, Steve Luttrell, Mike Simon, and Lynn Rice. Few notes there, again, they, we have a bailer down there that continues to cause some problems. And don't know what we're going to do about it. We can't, don't have the money to replace it, but we just have to keep it going as well as possible. Commodity prices are up and that's good and looks like they might be up for the rest of the year. So cardboard, glass, and plastic. Hopefully our return will be greater next year than it was this year. The advisory board is again brought to our attention, the fact the building down there is in not good shape, but can't really be repaired. So they're looking into how we can be able to go a bit about financing possibly a new building to be built there. So that's just about it. Next reports, the community development from Perry County Development Corporation. Seeing a blink in way there, they discussed the fact this would have been a very good year. Over 8,000 people did ride the trains this year. And again, this coming year, they hope to broaden that and have actually more trains running and increase the, the usage of that train. Eventually they hope to be able to run the train over to Lincoln City. And they could possibly tie that in with some amphitheater things. Of course, this would have to be post COVID to do that. But the train haven't had a very good season. Parks update, they're working now on the upgrading the girls softball field. That's going to be over here on the where Babe Ruth Park was at at one time. A lot of work going into that, but they hope to play there this spring. Also, the comprehensive plan, I guess you could call it there at the 19th Street complex. Some things are going to have to be done there. One, we'll have to decide the layout of the fields and possibly turn around a couple of the fields and have the whole plate opposite of where it's at right now. Let's see here, a couple of new doctors are coming to town. And Aaron updated us on the COVID phase three grant and that's going to be $250,000. And that's going to hopefully go to small businesses within the county area. That's just about it.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Next up, we have Councilman at Vard, Mr. John Little.
Okay, Mayor, more of water business, but just want to report that myself, Brent Badger, of course you and Matt have been meeting with vendors on the new water meters that we're looking to install, the automated meters. And we have another meeting this Wednesday and we're trying to whittle down basically which direction we're going to go, what vendor we're wanting to go with. So you know, we are attending those and getting all the information and then I'm sure we'll sit down and, and discuss with Superintendent Badger on which direction we need to go on those, but that is moving along. So just wanted to let everybody know that that, that program is moving along. So that's all I have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, John. Clerk Treasurer Connie Berger, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, Connie. And City Attorney Jeff Haggard, do you have anything?
Sorry, Mayor, I was on mute. Only update, we had our special meeting with regard to the property in Troy. We completed that conveyance. The industrial drive property has been conveyed to Troy. Been doing some research on the small cul-de-sac. There's a process we're going to have to go through that's a little bit more complicated. Will not involve coming back to the council, I don't believe. I just completed some research on that today and should be presenting that later on. I've also, real quick note, vacating the streets in Haggadorn Park. Had a discussion with the surveyor last week about getting the descriptions of all the streets that need to be vacated. I think that is actually going to turn out to be something that's pretty easy by simply presenting a petition to the Plan Commission, which the Plan Commission, I believe, can approve. So that's on, that's on my, my agenda right now as well.
To further expand what Jeff was talking about, he's talking about the sports complex area. All that property is tied into what they would call Haggadorn Park and it has to be on one deed for that DNR grant that they got for the swimming pool. Before we can receive those funds, that deed has to be all one, which would include any streets that would have been, you know, to be vacated properly and so forth. So that's where, that's where we're at with that and that's.
That's correct. There's a surveyor.
That's what's going on for a while. We are, Cash Wagner is the ones doing that for us.
Yeah, they're going to do a meets and bounds survey, so it'll, it'll look like a survey description like property you see out in the county that has the calls on it for all of the, the boundaries rather than a listing of city lots and blocks like most properties in town.
Right, okay. Anything for Jeff? We'll move on. Under old business, we do not have anything. New business, we do have a few things. We're going to, we do have two gentlemen here on our meeting. We have Dr. Joe Leclerc, President of the Tell City Historical Society, and we have Tony Holliday. President of Regional Arts or just the Regional Arts Matriarch, I guess you could say. You're the chief.
I hope I'm not the matriarch, but you know, if that's what you guys are okay with, I guess, yeah.
So, Council, Dr. Leclerc and Tony Holland both have some things they would like to, to discuss with the council. And so I'll let both gentlemen, you can go, A and B can kind of be together, but I'll let you both go, go with that. So you guys have the floor.
Well, thank you. And what an absolute honor to be able to address this august body. It's been a long time since I've gotten to talk with you. And unfortunately, this time I'm here asking for money. The Historical Society, as you know, is the city's attic. And so there's all sorts of lovely things there, but they're no good unless there's a story. And that's what's caused our problem. The only way there can be a story if somebody comes in there is if we've got people manning the museum, organizing the files and can tell them what's going on. And unfortunately, the folks in the Historical Society are like me, they're past 65 considerably. And with the COVID and everything, we have not been able to have it open to the public as much. And unfortunately, our utilities and what have you have gone on as is regardless of whether or not the people coming, coming in. And yes, we've had our board meetings and there is work going on. And the most interesting of which you guys might like is the, the Main Street project. And if any of you have ever done an abstract, and I'm certain some of you have anyway. It tells you the history of a property and we're doing that with Main Street. And again, it's not that neat unless there's somebody there to interpret the information for you and tell you what's going on. But at any rate, our utilities run $400, I don't know, but it's, it's between $4,000 and $5,000 a year. And I'm just going to tell you that $300 a month would be a tremendous shot in the arm for us. Because we've also got a project coming up where we're going to be redoing the roofs and there's some plaster work that needs to be done inside. And yeah, there's people that, that make donations and we're lucky to have those kinds of things. But we rely on our dues, which brings in about $2,000 a year. And as you can see, if you're spending four to five on utilities, we're kind of sucking gas there. So any consideration you could give us, I would appreciate.
Okay, and before the council comments, I'll go let Tony discuss his regional arts.
Well, we're, we're at a crossroads, we feel like. In, in competition with other communities, we, we just do pocket little things here and there. And we've had the opportunity to go over with, at the Swiss Plywood Building and secure, if, if we're able to secure funds, a large area that we can expand and blossom and do all sorts of super cool things from plays to music lessons to, well, the sky's the limit. And we would have our own home, we would be able to be constrained, we wouldn't be constrained with trying to come up with $300 each month for our rent, our utilities. We'd be able to use any funds or donations or grants that we try for, for work with different people. Pat Jarboe is our newly elected president and already eyed today the fact that there are areas there that he'll be able to get set up to have auditions and practice for the play for next summer. I was supposed to tell Joe Leclerc they want him to be in the play, so I got rid of that. And anyway, it, it just would, we would go from black and white to color is the way we're looking at it. And we would make a, a big splash. People would know about us. It, it would be, it would be a shining star, I think, for our community if you guys would help us out.
Okay, counsel, you've heard both Dr. Leclerc and Tony discuss the Historical Society and the Regional Arts. Counsel, please, you know, discuss, bring up any questions you have for Dr. Leclerc or Tony regarding either one of those entities. You guys have the floor. It's, you guys are in charge of the budget, not me. So I think it's a great idea, but you guys are in charge of the, the budget, so I'll let you all discuss it. Funds and so forth, what your thoughts are, concerns, you name it, so.
Mayor and gentlemen, appreciate you talking to us tonight. My question is, has there been any attempt by either organization to gain any corporate sponsorship over the years?
Yes. Here's, here's the deal, Gary. For everybody there, you, when you have a limited amount of time, we all have full-time jobs. And then you get together at night, you can either spend 100% of your time promoting Tell City, doing exciting things and getting people involved, or you can go door to door and try to collect funds. And quite honestly, I've done this for a lot, a lot of years. I'm tired of trying to collect funds. We have people that will help us to get grants and different things for specialty projects. But nobody seems to have a grant that takes care of rent and utilities. And so we're, we're asking you guys, since we do, we feel we represent you to, to help us with our basic foundation so we can prosper and get bigger and better.
And I would sort of echo that. We've been fortunate to see, in fact, we just ran a campaign where a number of businesses and private individuals who have an interest in, in history have made some different donations. But as I briefly mentioned in what I was talking about, those are largely earmarked now for the repairs to the roof. Let's face it, that's an old building. As you know, the original parts in Andrew Carnegie Library. And there's, and any of you who have an older building know what it's like to keep that thing up. So I'm looking at more the ongoing day-to-day expense. And we're going to try to take care of the major things, the replastering, the redoing of the windows, tuck pointing, what have you that needs to go on.
And we're going to get furniture donated and/or purchase items that will need music systems, PA systems, things like that. We've got in line that, that we're going to go out and try to secure. But if, but if we know if our foundation is set and firm, we think that we can go ahead and make a big splash and, and make a name for ourselves and for the city.
Tony and Joe, this, this is Larry. Do, do you have a specific amount in mind, dollar amount?
We both would like to have $300 a month, whether it's one lump sum at, at the beginning of a year or, or every month.
So $3,600 a year each?
Yes, sir.
Do you?
I'm sorry.
Just a couple more questions. Do you view this as an ongoing commitment or a one-time commitment?
I'd like to think that it would be ongoing. The, the Arts Council, actually back when I was on City Council and up till just last year, did receive anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 in the time that I've been a member of the City Council on up till now. So I, I may not, for my part, be asking for new money. I'm just asking for the old money to get started back up again.
Well, I think, I think we've got a little bit budgeted this year, Mayor Connie, but not, not near that amount.
Correct. At this time in the Riverboat Fund, there is $1,000 appropriated for 2021.
For each entity or?
No, I'm sorry, just for the Regional Arts.
For Regional Arts?
Yes.
Is there anything for the Historical Society?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
And Counsel, just to interject, if you remember, we left, and not to be disrespectful to any of the organizations such as Regional Arts or Historical, we really had to be safe, I guess cautious with those funds because we weren't sure how the Riverboat Funds were going to be made up with COVID. Because that reflects, obviously, people can't go to casinos as well with COVID and I'm sure their revenues are down in their, you know, their participation, attendance, whatever you want to call it. So we need to, we need to look at that still, I think Connie and I do. Not that that's not a good source and the right idea. Before we didn't entirely commit that, we need to make sure we're projected out, not to go in the red with that. Is that fair to say, Connie?
Yes.
Mayor, and Mayor, let, let me add to that a little bit. And Connie or Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the city is being hit by COVID also as far as tax revenue. And we had to cut, I believe, around $300,000 out of our budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and we were unable to give any city employees raises this year.
Correct.
That's correct.
So we're, we're, we're faced with some difficulties also and but I, I think, Mayor, we just need to take a look at this and, and see where we stand.
I agree. And I've got some thoughts in my head on some things that may or may not work, but.
Where, uh, when do we get updates on Riverboat throughout the year? Connie, do we, do they tell us how it's looking or?
No, well, in the past, they have not. It is, we always just get it as a lump sum in, it's either August or September. And it's, it's based on, if you don't have a Riverboat in your county, then you just get so much money each year and it does not change. And last year at budget time, they only had given us half of our money for 2020 and it looked like we would not get the rest of it. So we were not able to budget as much for 2021 as we had in the past. But after that, we did receive that funding, so there may be some funds there to do some additionals with this year, but I have not had a chance to look into that yet.
And Phillip, you bring up a, a good question regarding the distribution of the casino funds. That's been an ongoing battle between communities who do not have Riverboat and those that do and neighboring counties and so forth. That's a, a whole new ball of wax that someday communities that do not have it should really unite together and discuss it with legislators. That would help out a lot of counties such as ours and other ones, but that's another day. Any other councilmen, any thoughts or concerns regarding Dr. Leclerc or Tony's proposals?
I'd just like to say one last thing. I don't want you to have the perception that once, if you were gracious enough to start us with this year, that you're locked in for life. I think we'll need to prove on a yearly basis, come to you or every other year, a do's and don'ts of where we're at and our attendance and what we do and prove to you that you made the right decision. We feel that we're not just an organization and that we want to become a part of the city. We think we represent you and part of the city, just like the softball fields and the swimming pool and the baseball and all that kind of stuff. We, we'd like to prove that we're going to be a good partner, just like they are.
I agree, Tony. Both of them are very important organizations to have in the community. I'm on the Regional Arts and I'm on the Historical Society, so you know, I'm in a tough spot. That's why I'm trying to stay out of it in a way. But both are very good organizations and well-respecting the community and do a lot. I agree. I think they're outstanding.
Thank you.
Did we have surplus built in to Riverboat or?
I need to work those numbers up and see. I think there probably is some there, but I would like to work them up first and see where we are at.
Okay, yeah, so we're just kind of talking, okay.
Connie, can you get that information to us sometime before our next meeting?
Yes, yes, I can.
Bring it up again?
Yes.
We'd appreciate that, especially we're, we're in the, in the throes of starting that, that location and signing an agreement with Alvin Evans and his, his guys that are responsible for the building. So it, it would be kind of a comfort to know within a month, if we could, that we could get started and, and make our dreams come true.
Well, I, I will definitely get something worked up and get it to all the council members.
Mayor, it sounds like maybe we need to table this till Connie can get us this information, then we can discuss this further. And hopefully be able to help the Historical Society of Regional Arts counsel both out.
I think that's fair, so if there's nothing else, we can just move on from that. I don't think we need to necessarily have a motion on it.
You're going to hurt anybody's feelings if we sign out?
No, sir.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I did make a note to put on the next month's meeting, so I'll give it to Werner. Next item on the agenda is item C, application for taxable taxi cab, rather, license. We have an application, just one, that's been turned in us from the Marksmen Cab Company at on 2, was it 901, 801, sorry, Tell Street. They've been a long-standing cab company here in our community for a number of years. They have three vehicles. One being their, their van. It's obviously, it's a 15-passenger. That's, that's pretty new to this year, I would say.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions on their application.
Sure.
Well, one, one on their application and one in general. If you scroll back up to the top of the page. Says number of cabs for which application is made, two, and then below that is in the description, there are three vehicles. So are they applying for two or three licenses?
They're applying for three. They had dropped off this application to my office and they had not put the van on there. And so I called and talked with Jerry and he gave me permission to go ahead and put that on there because they still do have it and are planning on using it. And I just didn't go up there and change that to a three.
Okay, so the two should be changed to a three.
Changed to a three, yes.
I guess the other question I got, and this is more, I guess, for Jeff is why do we, why do we even license cabs? I mean, what do we supervise them? Do we? Um, I mean, what do we supervise them? Do we check on them periodically, or what, why does the city even issue a license for cabs?
Cause we have an ordinance that ha- that has us do it.
And, and I, I didn't look that ordinance up, but is that?
Ordinance 451.
Yeah, we have an ordinance that requires it, and for all intents and purposes, Larry, what that ordinance requires is that the cabs be inspected. I believe that Chief, Chief Lawland or somebody at the Police Department has done that. Um, that obviously they pay their license fees. Um, beyond that, uh, it's not a great deal of supervision. It's just, uh, I, I think, you know, in this day and age of Uber and Lyft, which are not in our area, but
Yeah, exactly.
But, but cab companies are becoming a bit antiquated. Um, but we still have one, and I think we're, at this point, because Uber and Lyft aren't in our area, we're thankful that we do. Um, it does provide a resource for some folks that just don't otherwise have a way to get around.
Okay.
But I think that kind of is, is the best answer I can give you, is that we do this because we still have an ordinance on it.
Well, I, and, and I appreciate that, Jeff, but I, I just, as I was reviewing this, I just wondered why. You know, but, I mean, we get a hundred dollar fee once a year and the police inspect the vehicles, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that, that's all I've got.
Okay, um, there is no approval on the application itself. There's just a resolution that we have to approve.
Okay.
Um, I'll go and pull up the resolution now. Resolution, um, Council, do you want me to go ahead and read the resolution? I guess it's, I don't need to vote on that, but, uh, resolution, uh, 2021 dash two, resolution for the City of Tell City for the public convenience and necessity. Whereas the City of Tell City deems that public convenience and necessity justifies that the operation of Marksmen Cab Inc., a taxi cab service, which, uh, excuse me, serving the citizens of Tell City and surrounding community with public transportation. And whereas the said company has submitted to the Clerk Treasurer of the City of Tell City an application for a taxi cab license in accordance with Indian, or accordance with ordinance 451. And whereas the Clerk Treasurer has received the required documentation, certifications from the Chief of Police that the vehicles used for transportation of passengers are deemed safe for operation, and current certificate of liability insurance has been received, and your annual fee of $100 has been paid. Now, now therefore, let it be resolved that the common counsel of the City of Tell City authorizes the issuance of an annual taxi cab license to the applicant Marksmen Inc. for the year ending in December 31st, 2021. Mayor of Tell City, Presiding Officer, Attessa Connie Aberger, Clerk Treasurer, date. Council, you have heard the first and only reading through resolutions, since they do not require a second or third. Uh, but there are no other questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as written.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman Clemon. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Julie Conard, seconds. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
John, are you opposed or for?
I am for, Mayor.
Okay, you just got a little delay, and I just didn't wanna miss, uh, get your vote wrong. Thank you for clarifying that. Next item on the agenda, our new business is, uh, item D, two-year outstanding warrants. And let me pull this up. Here we go.
Are these arrest warrants?
They are, Philip. Thank God you're not on here right now. No, I'm just kidding. These are outstanding warrants for, uh, voided checks and so forth. Connie, um, this is more you, so I'm gonna let you drive this bus a little bit.
Uh, each year, we have to report to the City Council the outstanding warrants from two years, that are old for two years, and these are the ones from 2018. We're showing one from the City General Fund in the amount of $65. There was none in the trash department. The Water Department also had one for $250. Waste Water has one for $110. And the Electric Department has several here for a total of $459.37. What we, what I'm asking this evening is just for your approval, so these checks can be voided and these amounts can be put back into the cash of these different departments.
I'll make that motion.
On second.
We have a motion made by Councilman Morton and a second by Councilman Clemon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
John, you're for it, right? You're gear, you're, you're such a delay, I can't.
He's in a bad mood.
I even tried to do it earlier this time, Mayor, but I still didn't get in soon enough. Yes, I am an aye.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that. Thank you so much. Um, that's all the new, that's all the new business. Far as Mayor's report goes, I did report in the Board of Public Works that we did submit a, uh, for round one of the 2021 Community Crossings Paving Fund. Um, and if you would like to see a list of that, I can give it to you. Um, it might be a little premature, probably better to wait until, uh, we receive any awards, so there's no confusion as far as what streets were awarded to be paved through grants and not. But if you wish to see them, I'd be more than happy to provide those to you. Other than that, I have nothing else under my mayor's report, and there's nothing else to be brought up before the council. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion made by Councilmember, uh, Julie Conard. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gary Morton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I was waiting to get John in there. Y'all have a wonderful night. Thank you all for joining.